This is a virtual meeting and there will be no prayer or pledge tonight. We will waive those for this meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Thank you Mayor Moore. Just for a reminder for the council members, due to the current regulations, please respond with present and state the city and state where you are attending from. Councilmember Williams. Unmute your mic, Councilmember Williams.
Can you hear me?
Oh, now I can, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Williams from... I'm supposed to state again?
City and the state.
Oh, Saginaw, Michigan.
Thank you. Councilmember Balls. Councilmember Bench.
Present in Saginaw, Michigan.
Thank you. Councilmember Oystash.
Present from Saginaw, Michigan.
And Councilmember Scherzer is excused this evening. Councilmember Copeland.
Present from Saginaw, Michigan.
Thank you. Councilmember Lamar Sylvia. Councilmember Flores. And Mayor Moore.
Present, Saginaw, Michigan.
Thank you. We have five members present, four absent. We do have a quorum, Mayor Moore.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have an end now?
Yes, I do have a couple. Let the residents be aware that the yard waste collection has been extended through December 4th. But please have your yard waste containers at the curb before 7 o'clock a.m. on your regular trash collection day. And also for a reminder for the council, when stating a motion or offering a second to the motion, please state some... state it as move and then say your last name, such as move Copeland or second Williams. The mics will be muted until you are recognized to speak. So you have to maintain your microphone. The mayor will look for a raised hand in order for you to be recognized and then you'll you'll speak when the mayor says go ahead. Just a little housekeeping rules for you to remember the virtual process. Thank you. And with that, Mayor, that takes us to public input. Unmute your mic, Mayor.
Madam Clerk and Mr. Walls just came in.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda.
And Mayor Moore, did you want to state the rules of the three minutes for the public?
This is a reminder that you have three minutes to speak. You will be timed. Please cover all areas that you want to talk about within those three minutes. Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Our first speaker tonight is Angie Miller.
Good evening. My name is Angie Miller and I'm the president of the Mid-Michigan Area Labor Council. I'm here to speak with you this evening to bring you up to date on some things that we've been working on since COVID hit. In October, we did our annual ramp build. So every year, we go out and build ramps on individuals' homes to enable them to have better access to their home and, you know, more accessibility to come and go. So in October, approximately 60 volunteers came together to assist in building six ramps. And of course, we did it very safely under the current COVID conditions. Three of those six ramps that were built in Saginaw County were in the city of Saginaw. So although we were not able to do as many ramps as we normally do because of the COVID situation, we have, you know, six families that are greatly affected by those ramps that were put on their homes. We have also did... we also collected supplies for over 100 backpacks that were donated to such organizations as the Underground Railroad. And we have had six food trucks that have come into the city since COVID hit to assist those individuals who are in need. And next, I just want to appeal to city council and the citizens of the city. The next few months are going to be very tough on individuals and I realize that with the holiday season. But I ask you to remember that those individuals out there working are waking up the city. They're keeping it running during the day and they're putting it to sleep at night. And each day that they go to work, they put their lives on the line. They put their lives on the line so that everything continues to run. And COVID-19 is spreading at an alarming rate in our county. And I ask you to be considerate of that and think twice about what you're doing for the holiday season. And please, please wear your mask. We have people who are helping the city run, who are coming down with COVID at an alarming rate. And I'm just asking for us all to remember that we're here to help each other, to look out for each other's neighbor, and to think about that before you get together in large groups. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker tonight is Alexander Verdone.
Good evening. I'm Alexander Verdone and I'm here to update you on our group's efforts regarding the Anru Nuvall Monument on Ojibwe Island and its inclusive and educational recontextualization. Our group for this monument... for this project consists of people from the Castle Museum, Saginaw Valley State University, the Zebiwin Center for Anishinaabe Culture, the Ezekiel Project, the Saginaw Historic District Commission, among many other engaged citizens of Saginaw. As you know, our goal is to create an educational marker that stands as a medallion to the Nuvall Monument. We want this marker to be a permanent fixture because we want this to be an inclusive and informative project rather than a divisive one. Part of our task is to reach out to Saginaw's many communities and listen to their perspectives. So this January, we plan on gathering focus groups from the Native community, the Hispanic community, the Black community, the Catholic community, among others, so we may better write a marker which showcases the diverse and nuanced perspective of historical narratives. Because as this monument currently stands, a rather narrow historical perspective is portrayed when there should be a wide lens, especially in a public park in the middle of our city. We expect this project to be completed by spring of 2021. We will update you periodically on this project. Just as we seek participation from many communities, we also seek input and participation from city council. We hope that when we hear the... when we hear the conclusion of this project as we fundraise money and write the text, that city council will approve this marker's installation. If you have questions or reservations regarding this project, please let us know. We would not want to... this project to be voted down after having dedicated so much of our energy to its creation. City manager Tim Morales has asked if we have any examples from other cities about recontextualizing their monuments. And Dr. Brad Jarvis from SCSTU has assembled a brief list of such examples. I will email this list to city council and the manager after the meeting is over. And so to conclude, I will read an example of a project closest to what we are doing in Saginaw. This recent story concerns a statue in Anchorage, Alaska, dedicated to the British explorer Captain James Cook. This past summer, Mayor Ethan Berkowitz asked a nearby native village for it to determine what the fate of the statue would be. Considering how the monument glorifies European colonization of Alaska, the mayor proactively reached out to the native community and asked if they should be removed or not. The result has been a unified approach between Mayor Berkowitz and native village president Aaron Leggett, one that seeks to establish a process that respects the crucial role and sovereign authority of local tribes as we more fully and fairly portray Alaska's past. And as a result, the city and the native tribes are moving together to keep the statue in place while developing new ways to cite... to the site to represent the history and the voice of the Dinah Ina people. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, our public, our speakers. We are now at... Madam Clerk.
You are now at remarks of council.
This is a reminder that all council persons have three minutes to speak. Please get all of your information in within the three minutes. Thank you. And tonight, we will begin with Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the remarks from the public. I just want to reach out to our community in regards to the violence that has been occurring as of late. I would ask that we step up and work with our police department in these investigations. I would also ask that we put the guns down, come together during this holiday season and moving forward into 2021 so that we can help. Help make 2021 a better year. I just really want to see our city become the city that we should be and we can't do that by killing each other off. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We're all scattered, so I'm just gonna call. Councilwoman Bench.
Good evening to everyone. I would like to thank both of our public speakers for coming and providing us with those updates. I'd also like to just reiterate what Ms. Miller said, that with the holiday coming, it's... obviously, it's been very difficult and many of us have not been able to see loved ones for quite some time and would just ask that everybody, please, please, please consider, you know, staying home and just staying, you know, celebrating your holiday with your household. And obviously, continue to practice safe social distancing and wearing masks out in public. But I have friends who work at the hospital and they are overwhelmed and they are alarmed. And they're seeing admissions at a level that they have not seen before. We're seeing numbers increasing every single day. And if it's taking us six days to get tests back or seven days to get tests back, those numbers are probably lower than what they really are. So while we understand that everybody is going to go out and celebrate, we do have a lot of essential workers, as Angie Miller mentioned, who are working for the city and they, you know, they have no choice. People like myself and my coworkers, we don't have a choice when it comes to our employment. We either go to work or we lose our jobs. And, you know, the more people who celebrate this holiday, the more risk this poses to people who, like our police officers and our fire department and those people who work for the city who provide essential services are just put at further risk. And I just, I don't think we can overstate the importance of, you know, staying home, hopefully we can celebrate Christmas together. But we know that the situation's temporary and that if we do the right things, that it'll end faster than... than it has. So I just wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and I do want to commend the city for the lovely lighting ceremony with everything going on. It is nice to have, even if it's virtually, a little bit of our normal traditions happening. And I know that I think everybody who got to watch during the event really got to get a sense of community that we're all kind of missing out on right now. So just happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Please be safe, please stay home and take care of yourselves.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sylvia. Unmute yourself.
I'm sorry. Good evening, everyone, Madam Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem. Mr. Reggie, Councilman Reggie, I think we're on the same page. So I will repeat what you said. I did contact the city manager today in regards to possibly a task force or something of that nature in regards to the violence. I do have a letter from a citizen I'd like to read for my time. It says, "Dear Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and all Saginaw City Council members, For far too long has the city council of this great city set idle as violence among its citizens wreak havoc in our community. Violence in our city is not a black or white issue, but rather it is a concern of the whole of Saginaw for it affects the whole of Saginaw. How can we solicit businesses and professional men and women to come here when our city is out of control with violence? As members of our Saginaw City Council, we citizens expect the council to use its position as city council to work well with the community and law enforcement agencies to rid our community of its negative elements. As violence is escalating, this is not the time to remain silent, but rather encourage your community by letting them know that they have your sympathy and support during this time. Elected people should be speaking up and out about the violence and they should be working to help bring those justice who are creating crimes in our city. I have faith in the council and I remain a friend to the council and citizens of Saginaw. Sincerely, Pastor Curvin Dye Merrill." So I definitely support what Councilman Williams is saying and I know in the past, actually, Councilman Williams and I and other persons, law enforcement, have worked together. And I know at that particular time, the crime in the city of Saginaw actually was way down. So hopefully, we as a council and maybe the city manager, we can all come together and we can do some things. Thank you very much and you all have a blessed holiday.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman... I'm going in no special order, young people. Flores.
Thank you so much, Mayor. And I'd like to thank the city staff for a steady and swift onboarding and orientation these last couple of weeks. It's been great to join everybody. I would like to thank former council members Forbes and Blind for taking their time to speak with me about the things that they had been passionate about and maybe I can kind of bring on some activity into that. Also, community organizers like Yancey Wingard II and Deshaun Hayes and Cornelius Phelps, Cecilia Olivera, Alex Mixter, Jess and Haley over at the Ezekiel Project. A special shout out to Bobby DeLeon and the MAC for getting the Bishop's Cup this past week as an award for all the good that they're doing in our community. And then I also want to thank Elise Medina for briefing me on the COVID response that we're currently going through. We have one of the highest COVID testing rates that is continuing to rise in our city. So we want to make sure that we're doing all that we can, whether it be contact tracing or whether it be staying inside and being a little bit more vigilant and making sure that everyone here in Saginaw is aware of how detrimental this is for all of us, especially going into the Thanksgiving season. And then last, I would like to talk about the increased homicide rate. We are all... all of us on council are aware of the press briefing that came out. But more importantly, we're aware of the people that lives have been lost. So including on July 19th, Tony Martin, Ricky Morgan, and on November 15th, Sierra Long. These are all young people that have not reached the age of 24. And so regardless of how it looks in Saginaw, we all need to understand that young people are perishing due to gun violence. And this is something that we all take very seriously and we will all continue to work with our partners in law enforcement to make sure that this stops because it cannot continue and Saginaw cannot continue to be dragged back into the type of reputation that it used to have in the 90s and 80s. We are moving forward and I implore the murderer of Sierra Long to turn themselves in and to rehabilitate and then help us on the backend of moving forward and preventing gun violence in the future. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Councilman Copeland.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this time. I think I'm gonna continue the sentiment of Councilmember Flores, Sylvia and Williams. During this campaign, I actually stopped by the home of one of the fathers who lost his son. And I can't explain the grief in an adult man's eyes and heart. And as a young man, what could I say? Because I could easily been his son. So my prayer is that we will continue to work together. Hopefully, soon, we can have a report from our committee that we have, I believe, that was recently created or we started regarding the police as well as community leaders. Hopefully, we can have a report from that committee soon on any updates that they can provide to city council. I also want to say, I want us to continue to look out for our neighbors. We heard that the leaf collection has been extended to December 4th. But if you are taking care of your leaf collection, if you can, think about the accessibility of your neighbors who rely on mobile devices to get around. Just today, I saw someone on a mobile traveling device who had to try and move sticks, branches that had fallen down because they could not get through the sidewalk. So if we can, during this time, continue to look out for your neighbor and think about those who are traveling throughout the city. I also want to say during the numbers of COVID, I had the chance to volunteer at Beppo AME and they offered a free COVID, free flu shot, HIV testing. And if you can, if you do feel any symptoms, even if you don't, I've been seeing charts explaining how that you may not feel symptoms until day four. If you have been in any contact with anyone who could have possibly tested positive for COVID-19, please take that time and stay home. Please quarantine. The reality is, our numbers, I've lost over 15 close family and friends to this virus. This is real. This is nothing that's just a hoax. This is real. Please think of one another, even during the holiday season. It's hard for me, just not being able to see my family. But please, 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 wear your mask, wash your hands, do whatever we can to limit the spread of COVID-19. I also would like to say thank you to the city manager staff. I want to give a special shout out to Vicki and Rachel who have helped me so much these past couple of days. I even found out that Vicki knows my hometown in Maryland. So I have a little connection with her there. But once again, I want us to continue to think of each other. Happy holidays, happy Thanksgiving. Whatever I can do, I'm just thankful to be here. But let us continue to think of each other. We're all we have. We... Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Oystash. Councilman Oystash, I'm sorry.
Thanks, Mayor. Without getting into a long conversation, I reiterate what all my colleagues are saying here about the crime in the city. Did have a conversation with our mayor the other night too, just before she went on television. So for any help that we can provide or I can provide, let me know. One of the things I do want to talk about tonight, we're talking about the current pandemic, but also there was another pandemic that started in the United States back in the 1980s and that was HIV and AIDS. So every year, December 1st is celebrated as World AIDS Day and it's a time when we come together in solidarity and support one another to still as we fight this disease. This year's theme is global solidarity and shared responsibility as they kick off this event. One of the first cases of AIDS, I did a little research today, was reported back at April 24th in 1981. And that's when the CDC first recognized that was the first case in the United States. Every year, as we come up to December 1st, the red ribbon that I'm wearing is a symbol to recognize that people have, that have died from this disease and that we still fight this disease every day. I do some work with the Great Lakes Bay Health Centers here in the area. Hearth Home is located right here in Hearth. They're just down the street from me. They also provide rapid testing, so you can get a rapid test in about 15 minutes. And also, anybody that's looking to... for HIV and AIDS protection, Great Lakes Bay Health Centers at the Jane Street Clinic, they will come up on websites that are talking about Truvada, which are some of the drugs that they... is one of the drugs that they use for HIV prevention. And Dr. Tortland there is one that... one of the infectious disease doctors that works in this area. And you can actually make an appointment with him and you can talk about this. PrEP does, is not a cure. I want to make that 100% known. It is, it does help lower the risk by 90% and it will also help lower the risk by 70% for those that are injection users. If you think that you've been infected by HIV, you have a 72-hour window. It's one of the protocols that medical and EMTs will use. You would want to get ahold of your family doctor or somebody that could provide the medication called Kombavir. It will take 30 days and after that, you'll be tested most likely. A lot of times, folks are negative. So this is being used in the medical field where somebody maybe, maybe have picked themselves with a needle and when they're working with an HIV-positive patient. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. I know it's gonna be a little different than your... this year, Councilman Bench has kind of made note of that. But I do want to know, I do want to let people know that this year, the Savoy Restaurant, of course, is closed and we are not doing free Thanksgiving Day dinners there. But right around the corner, my good friend Dawn, who runs Dawn of a New Day, she is going to be serving Thanksgiving Day boxes that you can drive up and take away with... and that's gonna be going on from 12 until 2 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mayor Pro Tem Walls.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Good evening, fellow council members and fellow citizens. You know, I heard the... the letter that Councilman Sylvia read and, you know, I'm not gonna say that the council members have been sent by idly. I didn't, I didn't like that phrase to the letter. But anyway, I'll let you know that some of us have to be involved. We can't save everybody at once, but we can save some people one by one. And I've been involved in the Big Brothers and Sisters program for over 30 something years and I think that's how we reach them, you know, each one reach one. Each one teach one. And hopefully, we can get those kids who may end up doing violence. A lot of times, I have noticed that the kids are getting involved in these violence. They know... they be in the crowd together, you know? They know who's doing what to who and all that kind of stuff like that. So, you know, the parents are not around all the time. I know that for a fact. A lot of people, young kids come from single-parent homes and society has a tendency to have more influence on them than their parents do and they get involved in that stuff. I... I'm gonna say, I don't know if it's fortunate or unfortunate, but I've been fortunate enough to listen to some of the rap music that goes around. And I tell them kids to cut it off because the things that they saying, it perpetuates those issues. You know, the way they talk about each other and say what they do to each other and how they disrespect each other, that's really shameful. You know, and I honestly believe that, you know, whatever you do the most, you do the best. Whatever you put in, you gonna come out. You know, every seed that's planted is gonna grow a tree and it's gonna produce some fruit. And if they continue to listen to those type of things and hang around with the same type of people that's doing that violence, they gonna continue to do it. But I honestly think that we can help kids when, you know, on a one-on-one basis to get out of that. I must admit, out of 30-something years in the Big Brothers and Sisters program and six little brothers, none of them had got into any violence. You know, so I know that it works. You know, sometimes we just gotta get engaged with those kids and let them know that they don't have to hang out with those people that's doing crimes. You know, it's a better way. And, you know, my heart goes out to all the parents losing them, losing their children, you know, it's horrible. You know, but sometimes the parents gotta stick up to the plate, you know, and tell their kids they can't be involved in these situations. A lot of parents know their children are involved in gangs and stuff like that and they don't do anything about it, you know? So we gotta wake them up as well as wake the kids up. So, you know, my heart really goes out. That's why I've been a member of the Big Brothers and Sisters program so long, 'cause I'm just trying to help save our children.
Thank you, sir. My comments are gonna be real short. The past week, I was here with the National Leagues of Cities at their conferences. We are working steadily, trying to work on some issues for the city of Saginaw. And let me, let me assure the citizens as well as my fellow council persons, I have been in contact with the media. We did a press release on Friday night. I spoke on Friday night. I'll be speaking tomorrow night and my message is real simple. Put down the guns and can we all work together? Can we talk about it? City council, most of us, if not all of us, we have an open-door policy. So if there's something that you really, really want to say to us, I'm sure you know how to get ahold of us. You know how to get ahold of us when there's something, when there's something bad. So it, please, citizens, if you have some concerns or some issues, we are working with the police department. They are looking at stuff. We are working with people. I'm not gonna say that it's gonna change overnight. My heart goes out to the parents 'cause I have, I have, I have one... I'm not going to say that it's gonna change overnight. My heart goes out to the parents, because I have a, I have, I have one son. And I would hate to get that call or that visit saying that my son was gone. I can't even begin to imagine. But my heart goes out. It's holiday time and it's really a rough time for people right now. Not only is it hard for the violence, it's hard because of covid. I'm asking all citizens, if there's anything you can do to help your neighbor. You don't have to talk to them. If you've got some extra food, just sit it on their porch and call them and let them know. Our seniors, let's not forget about them. Let's not forget that our seniors, one day we gonna be there. I'm there already. Every Monday and Tuesday, I drop off food boxes to forty five senior citizens. Fellow council members, I challenge you to do the same thing. I do food distributions and I do whatever it takes for our city. My guest speakers, you know I love you. You are always on top of stuff. Those six people who got those ramps, I guarantee you, they are grinning from ear to ear. Fellow council people, our slogan, it should be, put down the guns. Let's talk about it. And if we're not talking, then that means that it's a problem. So I encourage all of you to get involved. I know you are already. Councilwoman Silvers. My phone been ringing since last week, and every time it rings, I say to them. Lord, save my city. Have mercy on my city. So with that. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we are now at reports from the city manager.
Mister Morales.
Thank you, mayor, and um I will mention that um. We do have several groups in the city now that that do work on um crime and uh relations with the police officers. We do have one group that um we probably do need some council participation on, and that's Alpac. And um if a council member would like to be involved in that group. Um just contact me or uh Vicky Davis in my office and she can help. Um she's the coordinator for that group. She can help get you involved in that. So that, there are some things out there, uh and I will say I do echo what um. Mayor Pro Tem Ball said he does. He has been speaking about this all year, so. Um we recognize there's an issue and there is an opportunity, I think, for everyone uh to help out. It's a, it, this isn't, I I don't think a situation that's unique to Saginaw. It's happening in all the major cities, so. Um it's something that hopefully though we can work on here. And um we know there's correlations between several different issues, so. Um it it does take a team, so I appreciate the effort that a lot of you are talking about and and some of the ideas that you're bringing to the table. And I don't want to uh take up uh uh too much of your time, but I do have some items that I wanted to update you all on. One item uh that we haven't, we have talked about uh potential impacts of covid nineteen on city revenue. Um I'm gonna talk specifically now about income tax. If everyone uh. It remembers from our audits and our budget, income tax is the largest source of revenue for the city of Saginaw. The second largest source is state shared revenue. Those two sources are likely going to be impacted by uh covid nineteen. And um hopefully, we're hoping this, the hate, the state helps to stabilize. The state shared revenue, and I think it will will possibly um be something they can stabilize. However, income tax is something that we're solely dependent on, and our staff does an excellent job with collecting um. Past due income tax. However, we're, we saw a pretty significant decline in um withholding from employers in the city of Saginaw. For October, and what we provided to Congressman Kilby's office was a potentially ten to thirty percent. Decrease in income tax for uh fiscal year twenty twenty or calendar year twenty twenty. What that means to us is um income taxes budgeted about thirteen point eight million dollars. A ten percent redu- reduction would be one point three million dollars. For the city of Saginaw. A thirty percent reduction would be four point four million dollars annually. So that can be a significant issue. We're currently working with the M M L right now and uh Mayor Moore is on uh with the Urban Corps Mayor. She's working at it as well. We're trying to talk to the governor's office and the legislature about helping us uh with some. Uh urban stabilization issues, and one of them is with this income tax. And I know they have some good ideas, so we're going to support what the M M L's working on. And um I'll be contacting Senator Horn and Representative Gera to make sure they're aware that the city and and it is supportive of those measures. And um I know Mayor Moore will continue to push that with the governor's office and our legislators as well. The second item, um last year, uh we started. Having coffee or lunch with the manager, and I think that was something that was helpful for all of our council members, and it was usually me. And um two to three council members and we included the mayor, um if uh he was available at that time. So we realize right now, we can't go out to restaurants or or coffee shops to um talk about some of the issues. But I do think it's important, particularly since we have some new council members. I spoke with uh mayor last week. And she agreed with me, particularly with the state of the city coming up and some other issues. So we want to start to have those uh discussions virtually, so I guess we'll have virtual coffee with the manager. Um we'll probably start scheduling that in December. And it'll probably be the mayor and I, and uh Mayor Pro Tem, if he wants to be on at each meeting, uh he can. Um if not, we'll just be the mayor and I and we'll uh select a couple of council members and probably just. Have a virtual meeting for a half hour or forty five minutes to talk about some of the issues that you want to focus on. And also um some of the things we do throughout the year with council, I think that will be helpful for everyone. And give an opportunity to have that discussion and maybe a a less formal uh atmosphere. So um again, we'll start that probably in December. Um and that kind of goes into the next topic that I wanted to talk a little bit about, and that is our strategic planning session. Uh mayor and I had a conversation about that last week and today as well. And typically, we have uh take a full day, which is usually an eight or nine hour day. And um we have that meeting offsite and we talk about issues and projects and different things like that with the city. Unfortunately, this year, um that's probably not the best thing to do. Having a large group meeting like that, so we're trying to think of other ways where we can do that. And one way um that we could possibly do that is to have several committee of the whole meetings. And that would probably be for forty five minutes to an hour before our regular meeting. Um we could do that throughout uh probably throughout the spring, January, February, March, or early in the year and have several of those. And uh the the one benefit we've gotten out of um this whole crisis is that we do have, I think, better technology now. So we could have our, um even if we're having a live council meeting, we could have our guest speakers be virtual. Whether they come from Lansing. I know um some council members want to talk about land use. And we've worked with the Michigan State University Land Policy Use Group um several times. That might be something that would be interesting. I think it would be beneficial for council to hear an economic outlook given covid, and we've often worked with Dr. Eric Scorsone from Michigan State University as well. I think it would be really good to hear from him and the outlook uh for the state of Michigan. Because as I mentioned, that has a significant impact on our uh revenues for the city. And then um. We probably would want to talk about development a little bit, since we've got a few of um changes in that. We've got our our uh form based zoning. So I think that's what we're looking at with that, and the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and I will continue to talk about that. I know uh mayor has some more ideas she wanted to to give me on that. And then the final topic is our upcoming meetings. So we're currently under the um new order from the Department of Health and Human Services through our next meeting. It expires just after our next meeting on December seventh, so um we'll have our next meeting be virtual as well. If the um, if the order does indeed expire, that there's a possibility it could get extended, which um. I think may happen, but if it doesn't, we can still have a virtual meeting for the final meeting in December. Um but if there isn't a a Health and Human Services order in place, then we would want council to vote on having that meeting uh virtually. Um so we'll keep that in mind uh for our next agenda and we'll watch those uh Department of Health and Human Services orders. To see um how we proceed for the meeting on December twenty first. And that concludes uh management update.
Thank you, city manager. Is there any questions for the city manager at this time?
Oster.
Yes, Councilman Oster.
Yeah, thanks, mayor. Uh city manager. You mentioned that the, you know, the Health and Hu- Michigan Department of Health and Human Services through December seventh. Um but there was also the legislature, I I believe, gave us the opportunity to be virtual through the end of the year, and that would expire on the thirty first of December. I see Amy shaking her head yes. Okay, so. Right, so you. You'd still want us to make a motion to vote on going through the end of the year after the seventh of December, if I understand you?
Correct. If there's not a, if there's not an order in place.
Okay.
We believe that allows that to be administrative.
Okay.
There isn't an order in place, we would prefer that council take action on that.
Right.
Administrative action.
Okay, thank you. Um Tim, you were talking about our income and our taxes and stuff and our sources of revenue. One of the things that we've talked about in the past uh was our water delinquencies. Do you know if that's gotten any better? I I believe last time you reported, I mean, off the top of my head, normally we're running about five hundred and seventy five thousand in delinquencies. We were somewhere around one point two, one point three million this year due to covid. Has that gotten any better? And uh also for the, um it was also mentioned too that there is opportunity through the C A C, I believe, and also First Ward. To help with some of these bills, but I'm just kind of wondering if if how we're doing on the delinquencies right now.
I think that uh we're we're likely um in the same situation for the delinquencies.
Okay.
Um we do have, uh we're still pending on that program with the C A C that that is through the state of Michigan. Um the Fiscal Services Department and the Water Department had had elected to participate. So um hopefully we get some updates from that program within the next month. We're, uh actually, we're hoping to have information by the end of the year.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any more questions? As Tim said, as our city manager said earlier, we are at M M L, the Urban Corps, the mayors. We are actually working on the tax information that he shared. Um if there's some money, we gonna try to get it. If there's some help, we gonna try to get it. And the same thing with us when we talk about the virtue meetings. We know that if it is not a mandate. Then we may not, you know, we we will, we may have to go back in person. But once again, we'll try to be precautionary. We'll do like we did before, so I need you guys to think about that. You know, in the event that it can't go to the end of the year, what would you like to do? What's the pleasure? Okay, so here ain't no more questions for the city manager.
Mayor Moore, your next order of business is the consent agenda.
The agenda has been available at City Hall and on the city webpage and on S G T V. Channel one ninety one. I'm asking for approval of our agenda with any exceptions. I need a motion. Yes, Miss Silvers, you gotta turn your mic on, sweetie.
Okay, yeah, um I have an adjec- objection or and a question in regards to number six. I've been discussing that um with the city manager. And um one of his uh staff members, and I'm just not comfortable with that one right now.
We need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, I got it wrong. Uh I'll make a motion uh to approve the consent agenda, leaving room for exceptions. I'm sorry, I didn't realize I was unmuted.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. We have a second, and you need to say your name when you make a motion. I'm sorry, again. Your name and your second, please, for the clerk.
Second, Copeland.
Okay. Are there any rules for any other discussion other than number six? Do we need to have any exceptions? Madam Clerk.
Oh, you need to take a vote, and then we'll move on to item number six.
Okay, I'm sorry. We need a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, mayor. That motion has been approved. Our exception is item number six, approve the Second Amendment to the fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. Home subrecipient agreement with Saginaw Shiah Wasi Habitat for Humanity, Manity. To include the specific addresses and estimated funds for each project. That's council member Lamar Sylvia.
Councilwoman Sylvia.
Yes, um I just needed uh more information. I've been um speaking uh with the city manager. And um his employee uh in regards to that. And um we did get to the point where my, one of my questions was, if it doesn't sell, then it would be rented. But I'm just was thinking about those areas, because it can all, is there a way that you could like? I'm wondering like um, not pre-sale, but have people interested in it before you put those dollars in it. I'm saying like people aren't just gravitating to those particular areas in the city. And I would hate for us to um utilize the funding in those areas as opposed to other areas that. And let someone can clarify that for me, help me with that.
Um this is uh Tim, city manager, and I, so I just a um comment first about the meeting today. So um we do have all of the department heads available, and I see that um Miss Jones has logged in. And um she oversees that department. Um so she can uh she can add information. But um just initially with HUD dollars, um we are limited on the areas where we can spend them. They have to be low to moderate income areas, so um that's one of the first things that the the staff looks at. When they're allocating these dollars, um is is are they in an approved area by HUD? So they are limited. They can't use them just um in any neighborhood in the city. Um so that that hopefully answers part of that question. Um Habitat for Humanity has been doing this for a long time. And um fortunately for us, um it is an outside organization that does it. It's a grantee. And they have uh good experience with these kinds of house sales, and if they do have to be rented. Um I know uh Miss Jones had told me they they never have an issue with either selling or renting the property, so I'm comfortable that they will do that. Um the city did manage projects like this before, and I'll tell you, because we don't have as much experience doing that. We did hold houses for a longer period of time, so I think it is fortunate and better to have outside organization do it uh for us. Um but and I think uh Councilwoman uh Sylvia did ask a good question about. Would the city get basically stuck with the property if it didn't sell? But since it's a grantee, they're responsible for handling the sale and the rental, so we we don't expect to be holding properties like that. And I think that's a good question. And um with that, I will um ask Yolanda if she wanted to add anything. Because I know she talked to her staff about this is questions as well.
Good evening, mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. Um uh the city manager Morales is correct. Uh basically, what council uh council communication six does is give approval for addresses. We have been doing um working with Habitat for some years. They are a sub uh recipient of HUD monies. So when they come before the Human Planning Commission, they're coming saying that we're, they're gonna rehab homes. The, what's coming out of the the information I was able to gather on it was the fact that these are newer homes. So that um the S E V of the properties are true, estimated true cash values are a little bit higher. They stated in talking with, um, our subrecipient, they've also let us know that the city would not lose, um, because they have had a real, uh, high rental of their properties. So there wouldn't be a loss to the city, and that they have, um, a managing portfolio for these properties. So hopefully, that answers more of your question as it relates to, um, Council Communication Six. And also point out that, um, because of regulatory guidelines that, um, HUD has just recently implemented, we will be bringing back subsequent council communications for approval of property and the various census tracts that are governed by HUD. Any questions?
No, I think, um, actually, City Manager, uh, couple of sentences he, uh, made actually just really explained everything to me. You know, I don't want us to be, you know, holding the ball on a property or something if it doesn't sell or something. So I guess the city would be the fiduciary to, uh, those monies. Am I correct?
That is correct.
Okay, all right. I'm, I'm, okay, I'm in the know now. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Silvers, let me, Councilwoman Silvers, let me just say this. You will get your first experience sitting in. You'll get a big book. And we'll actually be in the room, but we don't speak. We hear presentations from other organizations when we hand out our money for HUD. And then it'll come back to the council. And at that point, if you got input on what you gathered, you can say it then. So I know it's all new to you, you and, you and Mr. Copeland and Mr. Flores, but just hang on, hang on. It should be coming up really, really soon, where Ms. Yolanda will be getting the information to us, and then everything will become clear. So, good question, good question. So with that, I need you to make a motion, if you're okay with the answer.
Yes, I am. I motion to accept number six.
I need a second.
Second, Copeland.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed? Ayes have it. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Our next order of business is boards, commission, and committee reports.
We have some boards that are empty, and we will be heading them to see in these conversations that we have, me and the City Manager have with our newcomers, what you might be interested in, so that we can get our boards filled up to capacity. Is there anyone who has any boards or reports that they'd like to give out? Yes, Ms. Silvers.
I raised my hand too fast, because I'm actually in the process of applying for three boards.
Okay, okay. Okay, we have none. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Our next order of business is appointment of board and commission members. And we have one this evening, is to approve the mayoral appointment of William Keyes to the Saginaw Arts and Enrichment Commission with a term to expire June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-one.
Bench moves.
Second. That get who?
Oh, I'm sorry, Monique.
Why'd you say y'all name, please?
Monique Lamar Sylvia, second.
It's been moved as second. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Thank you so much, Madam Clerk.
That takes us to ordinance introduction, and we have one this evening. It's to amend section one eighteen, procedure of application of chapter one eighteen, licensing of marijuana establishments of title nine, title eleven business regulations.
Okay. Motion to introduce this ordinance.
Bench moves.
Astash, second.
It's been moved as second. Any discussion?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, Ms., yes, Mayor Protem.
I haven't read the ordinance. It's one hundred percent. But do this include, uh, uh, places to, uh, smoke marijuana to? You know, where they can go and buy it? No?
No, this is just a one-sentence amendment to the already existing ordinance, where we're effectively changing, um, the definition of applicant to mirror the regulation. We're correcting a typo.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Astash, um, Amy, from reading the changes, it looks like it kinda gives us a blanket to the, whatever the state would do.
Correct. So I, when I originally drafted it, the, the language mirrored what the regulations had said, I think, at the time of that version.
Right, okay.
Um, as you know, I know you tracked it pretty closely. There were several different issuances of regulations from one set of emergency rules to another set of emergency rules. Um, rather than, the, the ordinance currently provides that applicants would include anybody with a ten percent interest. The current state regs provide for anybody with an eleven percent or greater interest. This correction just provides that it will include anybody as required by the state regs. So if the state keeps changing it, we don't have to keep updating our ordinance.
Perfect. That's exactly what I see that we're doing. Okay, thank you for that.
Any more questions? Okay, so, let's take a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? This ordinance will be laid over according to the city charter provision, which means it's gonna be laid over for thirty days, my new council persons. So we'll come back in thirty days, and we'll look at it again.
Mayor Moore, I think that's a two-week layover.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right.
Yeah, zoning is thirty days.
Okay, I knew it was one. Okay, it's a two-week layover for this ordinance.
Right.
Two weeks, so at our next meeting, it will come up again.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So then, Mayor, that takes us to miscellaneous business.
Is there any other business that we need to cover? Is there any other business? I just wanna wish all of you guys a happy, happy Thanksgiving. Masked up, you know anybody that you think might wanna tell them, put the guns down? We wanna have a safe and good Thanksgiving. Need a motion to adjourn?
Bench moves.
Second. Sylvia, Sylvia, you gotta be faster with that. You gotta be faster with that.
I see.
It's been moved as second. All those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
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 Everybody have a good Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.